Welcome. I'm calling to order this Board of Education Budget Committee meeting. It is Wednesday, March 30, 2022. It is 6:02 PM. And I would like to do roll call. Ms. Darling?
Here.
And are you by yourself?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is absent. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown is absent. Ms. Seem?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop? We also have Mr. Donovan, who can introduce our new guests.
Okay, I'll be happy to do so. But before I move it on to Mr. Chopa to speak about ELL, just one of the packages I handed out tonight. You have three sections of the -- there'll be three presentations tonight. So you have the planned operations, which will go third. You will have CTE, which will go second, and you have the ELL, which go first. So I'll let each of those people speak on their departments. And then you have two other sheets. You have -- the first one is the school budget allocation. So this is just basically the spreadsheet showing how we come up with the allocations. Now, what these are, these are the dollar amounts we give to each one of the schools. So basically, the principal and assistant principals, they're the ones that define how they're going to spend this. But it's for supplies and copy paper and small equipment and the things they need to run their schools on a day-to-day basis. So they get an allocation. And then if you have certain types of students with ELL intensive needs, you get a little extra money. Or if you have a special program in your school, you'll get a little extra money. So that describes that process. And the other sheet that's there, school reserve balances. So basically, there are five school reserve balances. Think of these as if things go really bad, where would we get the money? Okay? So there's a school retirement. So that would be basically to pay out severances and things. If we didn't have enough money in the budget, we could reach back into this account. So that has $285,000 at this point. School capital reserve, this account back years ago was about $8 million. It's down to $922,000. So that is right now sort of in case an emergency happens and we don't have any other funding to sort of fix a capital problem if we had a big flood or if we had anything catastrophic that we weren't expecting. So there's $922,000 there. The special education ETF, that's $216,000. That would cover a year where we wouldn't have enough funding for our special ed, typically the out-of-district costs. Then there's the -- we'll be talking about this later, but the title of it is the Volk Ed Capital Reserve, but basically it's a capital reserve for CTE. We have another one in the special revenue funds, which we'll share with you next week. But as you can see, this one, we've been buying equipment with it for the CTE programs. So that's down to $17,000. We plan on spending that down to zero and just using the new special revenue fund. And then the last one is the school utilities, which I think I set that up my first year or so here because that was an account that was difficult to control. Though by putting in buying our power in advance, we have actual the cost of the power each year. So we've got a better control over that, but just in case, there's $106,000 there. So that's some information for you. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Chopa to tell you everything you need to know about ELL.
And nothing less. Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to start the presentation. I like to start with just historical. Why do we even have an ELL program? Most folks know historically, you know, if your grandparents came to this country, there was no ELL. And it all stems from a 1974 Supreme Court case in which the San Francisco school district was stewed by some students because there was basically no accommodations made for English-language learners. So they had all the same textbooks, same desks, all of that kind of stuff. But as the quote from the deciding party there is, "There's no equality of treatment merely by providing students the same facilities, textbooks, and teachers." And curriculum for students who don't understand English are effectively foreclosed from any meaningful education. So that's the root of why Nashua and every other school district in the country that has an ELL program, this is where it comes from. So here in Nashua, we've got 1,548 students identified as ELL. Now, the next bullet there, 1,220 are active, 328 are monitored. So what that means is the students that are the 1,220, they have not yet tested out of the program. They haven't tested as proficient. So all of those students are eligible to receive ELL services if their parents choose to have them participate in the program. The 328 students are students who took our yearly access test, that's our proficiency test, and tested as proficient. And those students are placed on monitored status for four years. So they're all coded as Monitor 1, Monitor 2, Monitor 3, Monitor 4, depending upon the year. And after four years, they go to completed status. So as I mentioned, the active students get direct services. The monitored students, we track. So the ELL teacher is still responsible. Those monitored students are still on their caseload. So they're responsible making sure that they're making progress. And if they are not, if they're, you know, maybe not doing as well in some classes, the ELL teacher and the classroom teacher will collaborate and figure out maybe, is it a language issue or are there other? If it's a language issue, the ELL teacher will work closely with the teacher. If it's not, maybe attend to something that's not really the ELL teacher's purview. New Hampshire is a part of 37 states, part of WEDA, which stands for World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. And WEDA is the, basically, the company or consortium that provides every state with the access test that we provide every year, which I was mentioning. That's our yearly proficiency test. That's our high-stakes test. We have 33 full-time educators in the program. We only have 32 this year because we had one at Pennechuck, which we could not fill, So our responsibilities of an ELL teacher are to identify and assess students during the registration process. And the way that works is when parents come and fill out the registration packet, there is one of the forms, it's called the Home Language Survey. And when parents indicate, it's a series of questions. If they indicate a language, anything other than English is spoken in the home, the ELL teacher is responsible for admitting, well, determining if it's appropriate to provide that student with an assessment and then administering that assessment. If the student qualifies for services, if the student qualifies for services, then the parent has the option to accept services or decline. If the parent declines services, that means the student will not be a part of ELL classes but would still be considered active. They still have to take that access test every year, and they'll take it yearly until they test out as proficient. Of course, responsibilities of ELL teachers are to provide direct English-language acquisition instruction, work closely with mainstream teachers, providing strategies that are successful for English-language learners, and then the case management, which I kind of mentioned earlier, with the monitoring students, and then keeping track of the progress that the active students are also making. So here are our numbers by school. Those ratios are higher than what we like. I think I'd be much more comfortable if we were around 35 to 1 in every school. You know, Pennechuck obviously is completely out of whack because we couldn't fill the other position. Unfortunately, you know, we had put in for a number of positions in the Esser funds, but we just couldn't get teachers, which is unfortunate. So these numbers, if we were able to fill, hopefully next year, you know, we'll be starting the interviewing process soon, we can get a lot of positions filled, and these numbers would be something a lot more comfortable, a lot easier for us to deal with. So just, I know it must be confusing to see Broad Street and Charlotte and Main Dunstable. Historically, those schools never had an ELL program. Those were, if the teachers accepted services, we would bus them to a sister school where we had an ELL program. Now, you know, we really, that's not sustainable anymore. We really have to service those students in their neighborhood schools. So at this point, we only have one teacher covering those four schools, ideally. With those numbers, I'd be a lot more comfortable if we had two teachers covering those four schools. But, and you have the numbers of the monitored students over on the right. And of course, we're going to have more monitored students at the later secondary level because we don't see too many students testing out at elementary. But, you know, so you'll see it compounds in the number, especially now with four years of monitoring. That's why the numbers in secondary are so high for monitoring. And one thing, and also, the one thing that happened with the pandemic as well, given remote instruction, it was way less than ideal for ELL students. With our yearly assessment, we didn't have quite the number of students that we normally would test out. So because of that circumstance, a lot of kids, like our normal number of, say, 200 students test out, that wasn't quite there. So again, the numbers kind of balloon a bit. So today was a day we actually just sent out, UPS came and picked up all of our tests today. So they're bringing them to be scored, and we should have those results either in late May or early June. And hopefully, we get a nice, a nice number of students that test as proficient. Here's a nice visual to see how the program has grown. And amazingly enough, I've been here for that entire span. It's like, we started with 14 teachers throughout the district back in 2000. And so you can see the growth. And luckily, in the last few years, I know the green bars look small, but those numbers have been increasing as the district's providing more support to the program. So it's just, it's just a nice visual to see. And again, the blue is the active students and the monitored are, I guess that would be orange, I'm not super with colors. So who are our students? We have 55 different languages within the program. 61% of those are Spanish speakers. And the Portuguese speakers are overwhelmingly not from Portugal, those are Brazilians. We have students from 57 countries. And if you add up the students born in the U.S. and Puerto Rico, over half of our students are U.S. citizens. 11 and 1/2 from Dominican Republic, that's our next, that's the largest one outside, or non-U.S. citizens. And then the rest are just from all of 57, you know, 56 different other countries. So it comes from, we've got numbers from all over, all over the world. So some of the other positions in the program are ELL Communications Coordinator, which is Yanni. She's very helpful in providing interpretation services and translation services and coordinating that for the different schools, especially when ELL stu, I mean, just all of the different meetings that are important for parents to participate in, special education, or if the student, you know, the school needs to communicate for any number of reasons, it's important that we have that, the interpretation services available. So we do have a number of interpreters in district that we use on an as-needed basis only. And if it's a language that we don't have, we have contracts with the Language Bank in Concord and Bay State interpreters in Massachusetts. And they can provide, the Language Bank in Concord actually can provide in-person interpreters to show up at meetings. And Bay State interpreters has phone interpreters, where it'd kind of be like a three-way conversation. Our ELL Community Outreach Coordinators, we have one of those covering both high schools. And again, we had put in, into Esser funds, one for each high school, but we weren't able to fill that. Hopefully, that, we have one in each school next year. And then we have three, one in each middle school. And again, those are the really important conduits between the school and the parents. Just to, anything that's going on in the school, events that they want, you know, families to attend. We have family and parent engagement evenings for the ELL families. So these roles, you know, all of them, are really important in just ensuring that our non-English-speaking parents and families feel a part of our Nashua School District So this is the, our proficiency test that I was speaking of, that we just sent out today, which all of the ELL teachers take a nice big sigh of relief to have that over with because it does take up a pretty good chunk of time. You can see February, and then the window closed on the 25th. It's a test that assessed the four domains of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And to determine, students can score between a 1 and a 6. Our, the test out, that the benchmark that the state set is 4.5. So if student hits a 4.5, they go from active services to year one of monitoring, and then that would be, you know, year two, three, and four of monitoring until they test out as completed. So also a part of our budget is our summer school program, which is kind of cool. Just coming in here, the mural by the principal's office was painted by students in our summer school program this year. So that was kind of a neat activity for them. For elementary, we get around 200 students. Secondary, we get around 175. And the goal, just keep kids engaged. You know, there are academics, but also it's voluntary. So we obviously, you know, make it a fun program for the kids to just engage with each other and use the English language and just make sure that their acquisition is progressing throughout the summer months. There won't be any remote instruction for this summer school. That's old. And that is the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Do we have ELL students that are in special ed?
Yes.
And do you know what the percentage of that is?
The last, I can get you an accurate number, or so the percentage of English-language learned, kids in the ELL program who are identified, I can get you an accurate number, but off of the top of my head, I think it's around between 14 and 18%. It's somewhere in there, but I can certainly get that for you.
Okay. So, ELL is federally funded?
Yeah, we receive Title III funds by the, so there's an allocation of, I forget, it changes every year, an allocation for each student. Right. So, no, I was saying for each kid. And determine on how many kids you have in the program, you get that allocation for each student. So this year, it added up to $226,178. 228, 228, I think that.
Yeah.
No, you're right. I'm sorry. 226,178.
Okay. So if they're in special ed and they're in ELL, the government pays for them both, for each service, for ELL and special ed, or is it just one or the other?
I'll leave that to Dan. Does that work like that with the special ed students? How's that?
Well, the state funding, which is the adequacy funding, what they call it, you do get certain amount of dollars for every special ed student and for every ELL student. Federal funding, no. That's just the state formula.
Okay. And, okay. So if a parent does not want to participate in the program?
Yep.
We don't receive federal funding on that student, do we?
They're still considered active, so I think we, I think we do.
Well, why would we if the student isn't in the program?
We still have to do the assessments, I'd assume. I don't know. I think the state would have to, that's a good question. I could look into that.
I mean, because it wouldn't make sense, because if they're not in the program full time, you would have the state pay for the assessments versus the student in there full time. So I'd like to get some information on that, too. And, so the state adequacy funding, though if a student is in special ed and they're still part of ELL, we get a certain percentage on each one of that? I just want to get that clear.
It's a dollar value per student of ELL, and it's a dollar value of student for special education. So if you're in both, then we would get funding for both, yes.
You get funding for both. Okay. It's not prorated or anything, it's just a full funding, the full funding.
Right. Yes.
Very interesting. Very interesting. And IDEA doesn't come into this, the feds?
Well, IDEA is federal grant funding for special education students.
Right.
So it, I think if you're a special education student, they don't care if you're ELL or not, you're special education. So you can use the IDEA funding for a special education student.
Okay, on this, in this program, if they're special ed, if they're ELL but they're special ed, the IDEA would follow them over to special ed, basically? Would this, am I correct? Is that right?
Yeah. The funding for IDEA needs to be used on special education students and their needs and teachers and things. So, now, it doesn't cover all the costs.
Right.
It's just a portion.
And could you, and I should have asked last week when Ms. Bagley was here, could you also give us what the percentage of the federal government is paying on IDEA? Because I know they never got to the 100% that they were supposed to many, many centuries ago, I think, now. But I know that, I'd like to see the percentage of that.
The percentage of the IDEA compared to the total special education? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Seem?
I hope mine aren't out of order. When I was, when I was off the board, the whole issue came down with the Office, I think it was the Office of Civil Rights.
It's the Department of Justice.
And so, yes, thank you. And I'm wondering where we are. I know they had said we needed, obviously understaffed, and so can you just give us a quick review of that?
I would, I would, I'd be happy to come to a separate board meeting, given that this is really just concentrating on the budget. I'd be more than happy to come back and answer any questions.
There's nothing in this? Are you saying that there's nothing added to the budget?
No, not, no, not right, not currently. But any question, if you wish, if you want to invite me back and have questions about the Department of Justice, be more than happy to come back.
Well, I would personally like to, because I, because of my concern that we have not been able to hire the people. And so I'm wondering if there are long-term, long-term...
What I'll stick for now is I, there hasn't been a whole lot of communication with them lately.
They've probably been overwhelmed, too.
Maybe.
We've all been overwhelmed, so, okay. Well, so, well, that would be nice.
But you could easily just add a date on the calendar, and I'll come back, and we can have a conversation about that.
Well, I would.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll figure out what's going on, see how we can arrange that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Ms. Gilio?
I just have a question on the first page, where it's a modest increase you're asking for. Is that to go partially for staff or is it for, like, tests? Or it's $12,867 in?
That's the, so the, there's a, currently a software program that we use, that we had used Title III funds in the past, but we're really starting to rely on it much heavily, you know, all around the district. So it really should be moved over to district funds at this point.
So that's what that would be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Lampier?
I was just wondering, you said that the benchmark for passing the access test is 4.5? And I didn't know if it's the same in other states.
No. Every state is, has, they set their own. We are, I believe we're a little bit higher than Massachusetts, but we're also lower than some of the other ones. It just depends on what each state decides is a benchmark that makes sense for the individual state. But there's no mandated, you know, across the board proficiency level. The states are allowed to determine those.
Oh, that's very interesting. Thanks. And I also was wondering, because so few kids have gotten into the monitored stage because of the pandemic and everything, I was wondering how many, do you know how many kids took the access test this year? All take it, or?
Well, we tried to get all the active kids to participate. Some of them, you know, at the high school level, sometimes it's a little bit harder if they're, you know, truant or they're not showing up. But any kid that is coming in and active, even if they decline services, we give them the assessment. I don't have the exact number of how many kids we didn't assess that are active. I will find out that number when we get the report back.
Are you expecting it to be the typical number that passed during a school year? Or you feel like it's not going to be because of the, you know, lack of in-person schooling and stuff?
It's hard to predict, but what we've seen, so what happened a number of years ago was they switched from a written test to a computer test. So a lot of our students weren't familiar with taking assessments on computers, so we saw a lot of kids didn't test out for a year or two. And then we had a massive number test out. So hopefully, we'll have, you know, last year was a little bit of a hiccup with the pandemic. And hopefully, we're going to see the kids who maybe would have tested out on last year's assessment, test out on this one because they had in-school instruction. That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, that'd be really great. It would take less, you know, less stress on the system.
Absolutely. Right.
Thank you.
I know Ms. Seem and Ms. Johnson, I just wanted to follow up on Ms. Lampier. If the students aren't able to fully participate in the access assessment, do we, does our funding change because of that? Or do we maintain the same level of funding?
I don't believe it affects the funding.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Seem?
I noticed that there were only, with the, with the program that we use to access, to test these students, only 37 states are doing that. What do the others do?
So the larger states, like, say, Texas, California, Florida, New York, the ones that have really large populations of English-language learners, they use their own assessments.
Save money that way, probably, huh?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
Wow, thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. As you were talking about students being truant, so that comes back to the question about, basically, with the access. If students are truant a majority of the year, we still get paid. Am I correct?
I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not so familiar with the funding formula that Title III uses. I can get, I can get that information from the Title III office in Concord easily for you. But that's not something that, yeah, that I'm really that knowledgeable about.
Okay. So I guess my next question would be, so do we get audited on these funds?
We, we haven't been audited for a number of years, but yes, that does happen. The state will come down and kind of make sure that what we, so with the Title III funds, it's a set amount that you get. So there are three categories that we have to do activities for. One is language instruction, one's professional development, and the other one's family engagement. So the state will come, the last time they've done it, I think it was probably five, six years ago, they come and ensure that the activities that we proposed when the grant was written is actually what we're doing with the funds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, thank you, Mr. Chopa, for coming.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you for presenting. It was very interesting.
Thank you.
So our next presenter is Corey Kennedy, who is the, one of the CTE directors at North, I believe you are, right?
I'm actually the Assistant Director, and I'm at both North and South. There's a change in model for this year.
So I will let Corey take it from here.
Hi. Thank you for inviting me here today. I'm going to give you just a brief overview of CTE. There are so many benefits to CTE, I chose to highlight just several of them. Students who participate in CTE are more likely to graduate from high school, they're more likely to enroll and persist in college, they're better compensated in the year after high school, and they're more likely to be employed after high high school, and they're more likely to be employed after high school. This year, we're offering 16 CTE programs. Brand new is advanced manufacturing that was retooled, and we're all ready to kick that off in the fall. We have automotive technology, biotechnology and biomedical science, business pathway, careers in education. And careers in education also manages the Purple Panthers preschool. And we're also suggesting a slight tuition increase this year in the preschool. We also have CAD, computer networking, construction technology, cosmetology, culinary arts, design and visual communications, electrical technology, engineering pathways, health sciences, HVAC, and video production and broadcasting. So we have quite a selection for our students. We are one of the largest CTE centers in the state of New Hampshire. We are Region 16. And here you can see some of the sending schools that students participate in our programming. Through CTE, our students get industry-recognized credentials. The first ACE, that is through automotive, the automotive service excellence. The next one, SolidWorks, is for CAD students. OSHA 10 credentials are given to construction, manufacturing, and electrical technology students. Project Lead the Way is a credential for engineering. Barbering is through cosmetology. CPR and first aid is through our health sciences program. ServSafe is from our culinary program. Avid is from video production. Cisco from computer networking. And Adobe is received through design and visual communications. Also really important for our students, we partner with Southern New Hampshire University, the Community College System of New Hampshire, and Riviera University to offer dual enrollment. And dual enrollment is a huge savings to our students, not only time, but also it translates to dollars savings. It's, it's pretty significant. And many of our programs do offer dual enrollment, and we're working really hard to get them to be 100%. This is our enrollment for this year. You can see it's a considerable amount of students participate in both CTE and our introductory programs. We have a total of 4,172 students this year. And like most, we have ongoing supply chain issues, and prices are rising on consumer goods across the board. Lumber prices doubled from November 21 to January of '22. Our anticipated food price increases in 2022 ranged from 2% to 20%. An example of this is I was in the electrical technology program, and he showed me a spool of wiring that was $40. It's now $120 for the same spool. So we've, yes, it's, it's quite a huge jump. So the Nashua Technology Center is requesting a budget increase to cover the rising costs for food technologies and the construction trades programs. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I remember when we were building this whole program, and I had said I thought one building should just be a complete technical center, because I felt that more of the students would get into the field. Because, let's face it, there are a lot of students who don't want to go on to college. At this point, they rather leave high school and have a job, have that type of career, and then go on later. So how is the rise in prices in cosmetology? Are you be able to get products? Because I know for a while, myself going to the beauty supply store, because I'm licensed, couldn't get supplies.
We haven't had a big issue in cosmetology that I'm aware of, but I do know prices have been fluctuating. So they're going up and down. And it's really hard to predict what our needs are going to be in the future because of that fluctuation in pricing.
And how was, how was that program? Is it well signed up for a lot of students?
Yes, I believe for next year, it's oversubscribed, so.
Good, always. I mean, Sandra and I know about half, you know. It's like, I think that this is one of the best programs our schools have here, our system has, because of kids' kids' opportunities that they normally wouldn't have. And like I said, not every student wants to start off and go to college. And I think this is great. We give them the opportunity to learn. They can get their hands, try different fields, and see which one is best for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to call on myself. One of, one of the more dorky things that I do in life is I'm slightly obsessed with this old house, and I watch it all weekend, every weekend. It keeps me still for a couple of hours. But they have this program called Generation Next, and it was, it's an apprenticeship program where kids from local high schools down in Massachusetts partner with area construction, electrician, plumbing, to, you know, do apprentice work. And they start in high school, but they actually partner with the schools, and it sounds like they sponsor the student to participate in the CTE program. So like, if they needed their own wire harnesses for the class, it comes from the electrical company that would then take them on as an employee when the program is done. Have we explored anything like that up here?
There is a mandate from the state for CTE that we involve all our programs in work-based learning. So that is something we are looking at for every program right now, to get them in, into industry and work with professionals, and really get the training that they need to be successful after high school.
Right, because it offsets their cost of hiring the apprentice and doing all that for them once they're out of school. So it probably, I'm thinking like Stellos Electric would be an offset to them, to have us train the kids instead of them doing on-the-job training. But it's just throwing my two cents into a hat that's very well taken care of. Any other questions?
Okay.
Ms. Seem, sorry.
I'm sorry. Welcome. You know, I didn't recognize you at first, but I remember that when, a year ago, I don't, wasn't even a year ago, was it, when you were interviewing for this job, we talked about marketing for the CTE program. And I remember that you were particularly enthusiastic about that. And I guess I would ask you two questions in that regard. The pandemic probably made that a little more difficult as well, I would assume, but if it's had any particular impacts. And then the percentage, I was looking at the number of students, and I just wondered if the, and maybe I missed it, and it's there, a total percentage of our students who actually participate in CT, because it's always been my thought that not nearly as many of our students participate as could and would be smart, too. I mean, there's, there's such a wonderful opportunity for them to, to actually get careers where they walk, where they come out of school, be able to get a job and make money.
Right.
So I just wondered if that, if you had that percentage, or if, I don't know, because it was a little confusing looking at the numbers.
Yeah, I have the total number of students, which is 4,172. I haven't done the math, but the total number of students who are in both North and South, so I wouldn't know the percentage, but I could get that to you.
And I was trying to remember, truthfully, how many students we have in the high school. Mr. Donovan?
Well, we have about 4,000. So I, I'm guessing, Corey, that those numbers, the same student could be counted more than once. So I'm just guessing. I don't know.
If they take more than one program.
So, yeah, if you take, if you take a fax course and you take a CTE course, you show up twice there, but it's only one student.
Yeah, and that's why.
You'd have to dig a little deeper to get the answer to your question.
I would love to have just an idea to know, because, again, going to this marketing thing. And again, welcome. We're glad to have you. I was very encouraged by your, by your enthusiasm, and I look forward to seeing more of you and hopefully seeing this program blossom.
I hope so.
So I'm sure.
Another thing that's reflected in these numbers is area students, too. So they're not necessarily part of our district. So that's also included in that final number.
Oh, so you have to break it down, yes. And that, that's kind of interesting, too. I just wondered the total percentage, how many, because I know, like, with cosmetology, one of my favorite ideas has been that, that the students who aren't going to college would be given priority for the CTE classes. Because, because in their case, that may mean the only job they ever have, that they make, well, like, cosmetology pays pretty decent. If you're good at it and you work at it, you can make a decent living. And so I just, I don't know. But I guess they take it first come, first served, was my understanding on that. And I just, it was always an area that I thought I would love to discuss sometime. That's all right. Thank you so much.
Also, you mentioned marketing. I have made some progress on the marketing. We now have a tri-fold brochure, which we didn't have before, which is being distributed everywhere. Instead of the brochure, which was quite expensive, because once a program changes, it makes the whole brochure obsolete, we've created at both schools bins that are brought to different schools to promote our programs, that have individual handout sheets that people could take with them, and they've loved that. We've had it at open houses at both schools, and parents have been swarming the tables and taking handouts. So that's been great. So we're not as far along as we'd like to be with marketing, but we're getting there.
But thank you for sharing that, because that's very encouraging, because that is one of the things you specifically mentioned. And I thought, wow, that would be, that would be, that would be wonderful. So again, I look forward. And if you make any accomplishment in the pandemic, I think you really did something. So thank you for your efforts and the encouragement that I get from that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Lampier?
I was just looking at the, the breakdown of the different, the different, the different programs that you offer. And I noticed that it said unleveled and honors. Do all of these programs have two different, two different programs, one for unleveled and one for honors? How does that work?
It works a little bit differently in each program, but most are in the same class. And different criteria, it's up to the instructor. But for design and visual communications, for example, you'll have your honors and your unleveled students in one class, and there'll be maybe additional projects for those in honors. Or sometimes the difference is just made in the grading, where there'll be higher standards for those in the honors level. Sometimes students will get instructions where, you know, do steps 1 through 20. And if you're in the honors, you have to do 20 to 30, but it's optional for those who are unleveled. So there's a variety of different ways that that's handled when both groups are in the same classroom.
Does it, does it mean that the classes are weighted differently for their class rank? I mean, is that something that?
Yeah, if you're taking the honors level, your, your grade is weighted differently.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Seeing no other questions, Ms. Darling, I haven't checked in with you. Do you have anything?
No, no questions at all. I love the CTE program, though.
Yes, it's fantastic. Okay, well, thank you so much, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you very much.
We enjoyed your presentation. Look forward to hearing more about what's going on.
Thank you.
Do we need a drum roll?
Well, it's come on down, isn't it?
Right.
Come on down.
Miss, last but not least.
Yes, perfect.
Plan operations. And Mr. Sean Smith?
Did I miss transportation?
He is.
Yes, transportation, we're going to move to the very beginning of next week. Dave is under the weather.
But you've been with the district forever, haven't you?
For a reason, but he'll, he'll be here next week. I'm not going to get into the details. Thank you.
Ask Mr. Smith, how long have you been with the district? It seems, I know the whole time I've been here, you've been here.
In my 25th year.
You've been here longer than me. Thank you for that loyalty to service.
Yes. Yeah, just on the last topic of the CTE program, I do think it's, it's a great program. I mean, it's, I hire electricians, I hire plumbers, I hire HVAC people. And there's a shortage of those people. It's hard to hire them. Whenever we have a vacancy, we have to really scour the neighborhood to find people that are qualified. And usually it's, I know somebody, that knows somebody, knows somebody, and then we encourage them to apply, and that's how we end up getting somebody. But, so it's. In fact, today I was meeting with an architectural firm. So we're, you're familiar with the microbiology program they have. That's one of their programs. Now they want to get into molecular biology, which I guess, I'm an engineer, I'm not a scientist. I guess that goes deeper. I mean, those are little, tiny little bugs that you need a microscope to see. And so they want to expand that program. And we're looking at the existing space here in this high school in a neighboring classroom. So we talked to Dottie O'Gare, and it's her idea to hire an architect. And I was thankful, because it's pretty complex, you know, putting that sort of lab into a school like this. So those bids are due next week, and they'll, you'll see them in the next Finance and Operations Committee meeting for proposed awarding. I enjoyed the ELL presentation as well, particularly when I saw the ELL teachers added. It struck a chord with me, because my custodians have been going the opposite direction. So I kind of, I see the tie in there. I'm not begrudging him of his teachers. I'm just saying what I just said. So Plan Operations, again, I'm in my 25th year. And how do I?
Can you turn your mic on?
It is on.
Oh.
Can you slide show?
Well, you want to get rid of this other stuff here?
Yeah.
Sure.
In the very beginning.
Can I just tap the screen or go to the next one or something?
That's when they know what they're doing.
All right. Here we go. So this has been the toughest budget I've tried to assemble in all my years here. I'm sure you've heard it from other departments. This pandemic has kind of wrecked havoc on us. Can't really take the data that we've accumulated over the last two years and apply them to next year, because the last couple of years have been, we haven't had all the students in the buildings. We haven't used all the utilities that we would have normally used. Even in my department, it's, the custodians have gone from traditional cleaning to more deeper cleaning and more maintenance, actually. So the supply lines themselves are skew. We've all, you've all heard about the supply chain issues. We're seeing that as well. Petroleum costs, so true story. I dabble a little with stocks. I'm not a huge portfolio, but back in January, I bought a couple of oil stocks just for the heck of it. They've done great ever since, which is good. But it's, it's bad for our business here, because part of what I have to buy are trash bags, and those are made out of petroleum. Part of what we hope to do this summer is do some pavement, some asphalt. So one of my projects is to redo the fire lane behind Dr. Crisp Elementary School. There's petroleum products in asphalt. So it's, it's going to hurt us. It is hurting us already. And you've all seen it on your, when you go to the gas pump. I saw a funny joke somewhere, the people take their mask, right, they're wearing right here, the gas pump, but over their eyes, so they can't see it. So again, comparing last year to this year, it's skewed already. Last summer, my trade staff worked almost 100% at Franklin Street to get that facility ready for the new school year. So that affected our, our supply lines. So instead of using our supply lines, we're using money that Dan set aside to take, to bring Franklin Street on board. So when I look at my janitorial supply line, for example, this year, or electrical supply line, I've got a lot of money left over. Well, that's because we were using this other money last summer. And that's, I can't use that number looking forward to next year, if you can follow my drift. So talk about supply lines first. Primarily, these are primarily, I'm not going to go through every single line in my budget. But plumbing, I have electrical, I have HVAC, I have ground supplies, janitorial supplies, kind of a catchall miscellaneous supplies. That's usually where I buy my lumber and. So talk about supply lines first. Primarily, these are primarily, I'm not going to go through every single line in my budget. But plumbing, I have electrical, I have HVAC, ground supplies, janitorial supplies, kind of a catch halls miscellaneous supplies. That's usually where I buy my lumber and, and nail screws and that sort of thing out of. I show the FY '22 or the current year budget. I show you the, the number I actually went in with originally to Dan. And I, and I was basing a lot of those numbers on talking to the construction company. So as you know, we're in a middle, middle, the middle school project. So I talked to Harvey Construction, what are you seeing? What, what do you, what's, what's the escalation? He said, just year over year, it's 15%. So, I mean, if we apply that to all our lines, then that's a pretty sizable increase. And here, and here the mayor wants us to go 3% or whatever the mayor said. It's not 15%. So we, I guess, we can't do that. So we just had to take a hard look at every single supply line. Plumbing, we did raise it because I definitely have seen increases for plumbing supplies. Those are made out of metal. Metal costs have gone up. You just heard that from the CTE program. You just heard from the CTE program that the spool of wire has gone up. I'm seeing exactly the same thing. And that's the one line I did increase 15% with Dan's concurrence. HVAC supplies, a lot of wire in HVAC, actually. You think about motors and things like that. There's a lot of wire in a motor. The ground supplies, we put down zero there. I'm already, I'll go with it. I'm already concerned about it because that includes a lot of paint supplies. And paint, the cost of paint's gone up. We have a speck on the street as we speak for redoing the lines in all our parking lots. And I had to, I had to put on addendum to the specification because the paint we want is not available. Supply chain issues. So we're going with a cheaper paint. Probably be more expensive even though it's cheaper. So that's just, that's one line I'm a little concerned about. Janitorial supplies, I asked for increase. I, when we had the sit down, maybe Dan might remember, I think it was kind of before petroleum really started to take off. Again, I'll, I'll live with the 322. I think we'll be okay. But our trash, our plastic trash bags are going to have a big say in how that ends up. Miscellaneous supplies, look for 10%. Any of you that have involved at all in any sort of construction, home construction, if talking to your significant other, you try to go out and buy a sheet of plywood, you know what, you know what that's done. So I put in 10% increase there. And by the way, if you want to ask a question during the presentation, by all means, if you don't want to wait till the end, go either way. So contract services, another major area. These are really direct costs, and I give you the cost that I'm given by our vendors. Again, these are some of our larger contract services. I believe in your folder, you have my entire spreadsheet that I do every single year. It lists all of the, all of the vendors. For example, one thing not up there is every three to five years, we're supposed, we have a, a here report we're supposed to do where we go look at, we revisit asbestos in all the schools. That's a periodic thing. That's not going to show up every year. Every three to five years, we're supposed to have our large curtains flameproofed. I don't have that up here either. I can't even remember if we're on, on that year of doing it or not, but it'd be on that same spreadsheet that should be in your package. So these are the major things. We've seen a big increase in the NFPA requirements. Those are the fire related inspections. Really, they, they want more inspections, requiring more inspection on our sprinkler systems. And that's the reason for that big increase. Access control, we have, we actually agreed to a multi-year contract with them this past year. So that's going to continue for a couple of years for the maintenance contract. School pavement realigning, I just talked about that a little bit. Those bids are actually due in tomorrow. So I'll have a better sense for that number. Maybe when, hopefully we can adjust it one way or the other, depending how that comes in. Pest control, again, we did a multi-year contract this past year. I think it was actually a five-year contract. So, and then wood refinishing, we just got the bids in for that. You, as a board, just approved that contract Monday night, I believe. That number was significantly below that, the FY '23. So there may be some savings there that I can offer back. With wood flooring, we're, we're doing a little bit differently this year. We're putting one coat of finish down. Companies are telling us that should be good enough. I'm kind of from Missouri that way. I want to see it first. But we're going to try it. And I'm, I'm willing to try it because the gym floors have seen reduced use for the last two winters because of the pandemic. So I think we'll be okay. But the number, I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head, if that was 17,000 or something for one year, that number would probably, would probably double if we go with a two coats. So I think we're going to go, it'll be around 17,000. I'll need a little bit extra because part of that contract is also, is there any floorboards that have to be repaired or replaced? There'll be a little bit of allowance in there. So I think there's significant savings here that we can look at. Might have to put some of it into the pavement realigning. I don't know. We'll find that out soon also. So repair lines, these are vehicle repairs, equipment repairs. Most of the equipment repairs are for janitorial equipment, window repairs, roof repairs, general maintenance. And then we have a major repair line, which I'll talk about more. Vehicle repairs, you can see that line's already in a hole by $30,000. We have an aging fleet. I would say the city does a very good job with its capital equipment replacement fund. We just replaced one vehicle this year, and that was our, our, our backhoe. It was, it was literally on its last legs. All the hydraulics were, were shot. I don't know how much of that 30,000, we probably spent at least 20,000 on that backhoe, keeping that going. But we just got the new one in within the past month. Equipment repairs, I'm actually, I feel pretty good about our janitorial equipment. I think we've, when we get to that line, you'll, that, that budget line, you'll see I'm holding the line on, on that with a zero increase. But we've also been using that to repair other equipment across the district, whether it might be pumps or that sort of thing. Window repairs is holding the line on that. We've seen actually relatively little damage ever since we installed the security system back in their early teens. All the vandalism, just kind of, which we kind of expected. So that's been a definite, a lot of, a lot of the breakage is, is, there's still some vandalism, but a lot of it's just by accident. Roof repairs, kind of the same thing. Our roofs are in pretty good shape. We've had, we had a major roofing effort in the early 2000s. It's still sustaining us. And then we're also, of course, going through our capital program to replace the, when we work on, on different schools, we replace the roofs. General maintenance, that covers, that's the wide gamut of everything that's not covered up above. And I held the line on that one as well. So major repairs. Major repairs are, are projects that are between 5,000 and 50,000. 50,000 is where we start to put projects into the deferred maintenance list. And so I keep a running list. I probably, I believe that entire spreadsheet is also in your binder. That shows all the projects we have in the queue. But for FY '23, we've, we've put these in here. Dr. Chris talked about repaving the fire lane. I want to replace the stage flooring on, on both high school floors. Bleacher players at both high schools and the gymnasiums. Replace the water heater at Charlotte Avenue. I want to replace the keying systems, those are door locks in the North High School here. Some of the doors, main Dunstable, the exterior doors are starting to rot, rust, that sort of thing. This is the frames and the doors. So we're looking to replace some of those. And then the stage curtain hardware, hardware and the curtain itself at this school needs some attention. So those are the major repair lines, projects for next year. And this was actually a decrease from the year before. We were 135,000 last year and this year, and then down 117 next year. So heating, ventilation, air conditioning maintenance, these are for controls. And we have two primary control contractors. One's Siemens and one's Control Technologies. You can see Siemens has four schools, plus the administration building, and Control Technologies has 12. Dollars kind of follow along that same thing. The big difference is Control Technologies also has the two high schools, and those are about $54,000 each for that. Also in this line, I include the, the two big generators that we have outside each of the two high schools. Remember that both high schools are also emergency shelters. So that's another, that's the reason why those generators are actually there to start with. And then maintaining the chillers, so that provides the air conditioning for the two schools. Slight increases in those last two lines. And the, the controls contracts are directly from the numbers that the, those two firms gave us. We have actually a multi-year contract for both of them, which the board approved this past year. Equipment lines, I talked about this earlier. I'm just holding the line on, on the custodial and the trades. Those are listing in, on that spreadsheet that's in your package of, so this is for buffers, it's for burnishers, it's for vacuum cleaners, that sort of thing. And for the grounds, 4,000 will buy us two replacement snow blowers. Utilities, I heard Dan talking about this when I first came in. So, and as I said upfront, even utilities trying to forecast what that's going to look like in a normal school year is going to be difficult because the last two were not normal school years. And that's also makes more challenging because we added solar on the roof of two schools, which should tell us that our electrical usage is going to be going down in those two schools. We're going to be adding solar on a roof at Penetrack Middle School this summer. That's a third school. And not really, doesn't say it on there, but Franklin Street, I'm looking to put solar in that school next summer. Not this summer, but the following summer. So we're just trying to reduce our footprint on the environment, reduce our utility costs as well. So those are good things. Those are going to reduce consumption. But we're adding 40,000 square feet to Penetrack Middle School. We added about 8,000 to Fairgrounds Middle School, which that project's almost complete. We did lock in the gas rates this past year, slightly above where it was before. But if we were to try to lock them in today, that number would be through the roof. Dan would be clutching his heart. Same thing with electricity. We locked that in. We got, we got a really good rate. It was about the same as we had prior three years. Electricity and, and gas and oil all tend to follow each other up and down. And you think about electrical companies, I mean, there's nuclear power, there's hydropower, there's coal, there's natural gas plants. So that, where, where natural gas goes, electricity is going to go as well. And that's the best thing for us to do is to lock in these things long-term because it guarantees us what we're going to be paying, and we can budget for it instead of being surprised. It does not, if I talk about the next page, it does not tell us what the utility companies themselves are going to charge us. So Eversource has increased their rates.
Yep.
I don't think Liberty has really increased very much. I haven't seen too much from them as far as increasing their rates. And they provide natural gas. For water and sewer, we own that. But we seem to be increasing it at the same time. So we're doing that to ourselves. So this is the budget we have for next year. I, I have a spreadsheet I put up together. I do some fancy stuff with standard deviations and try to look at past year consumption and try to look at trends. Try to take into account somewhat the, the solar that we're adding. Try to take into account somewhat the square footage we're adding. So I think, I, I will admit that the electricity number is a little bit lower than I recommended. But I think when Dan and, I won't speak for you, but I think when Dan and Derek were looking at this, they, they were thinking about the solar reductions that were going to take place. Is that fair to say or?
The, the solar and the work that we did at the high schools.
True.
The savings there, the energy savings, so.
Right. Yep. So the, I don't know if we've talked to you much about the work at the two high schools. That work's pretty much coming to a close. They're at substantial completion. We're at almost a $7 million project when it's all said and done. Those are all energy savings. Everything they do is for energy savings. I mean, we're releasing, while, most of the stuff they installed, we're leasing. So there's a cost associated with it. But we're saving more than we're paying, than we're paying out. At least that's what we've seen so far. Natural gas, we are increasing. I would say that's primarily because of the increased square footage. And I'm at tight budget this year or?
Actually, last year's number, we budgeted, last year, this year's number, we budgeted lower. We're going back to where we have been the last few years.
And then water, it's about the same, a little bit slightly higher. Again, that's, that's the city of Ashworth that's charging that amount. So get into personnel a little bit. So I, I've been asking for a while. I lost 10 positions in, in 2016. That is, that has hurt, and it's hurt ever since. So the last couple of years, I asked to restore some. This, in this coming year, I asked to restore three. There's that. But to take into account the added square footage at Penetrack and Fairgrounds, I'm asking for half a position each of those two schools. It's just more square footage in both cases, and we need something to clean them. At, on the next slide, I'll talk about next year, FY '24, because we are adding, we're, we're not adding more students to Penetrack. So you're going to say, okay, if you're not adding more students, why do you need another custodian? We're adding a lot more square footage. And if I know one thing about teachers and principals and they're going to use all the space, they're going to, it's like a vacuum, they go, they're going to, there's going to be people in those spaces, we're going to have to clean them. And Penetrack in particular has always been a little shorthanded, particular since we made the cuts in, in 2016. So that's the main thing. Your main, my main request to you is continue with those two half positions. They are currently, they're already split positions. So the one that's serving Fairgrounds Middle School is also cleaning my building and the school administration building. The one that's cleaning at Penetrack is also cleaning half of Franklin Street. So we're just, I'm just trying to make those Franklin Street and Penetrack full-time positions. We're going to take the rest of that with a position I already have, and we'll do Franklin Street, the administration building, and my building. So that's, so next year, you get the delightful task at figuring out how to redistribute all the school population. And I expect it's going to be about the same number of students in each of the three schools. And luckily, I don't have to deal with that too much, except to welcome all the students when they come in and make sure their schools are clean. I will be looking to add one more position at Penetrack. This is FY '24, keep in mind, not this coming year. I will be looking to add a groundskeeper because we have all these new fields at the new middle school. We didn't have those fields at Elm Street. And right now, I'm thinking, because the new middle school is about the same size, it is the same size as Elm Street, believe it or not, I'm looking to maintain that staff about the same size, about the same size it is now. It's about 10 custodians. Dan and I've talked a little bit about it. It's going to be a brand new school. Does it need the same amount? You can argue that both ways. If it's a brand new school, you want to keep it looking nice. If you start to cut the people, then you're just going to see a gradual decline. But that's next year. We'll worry about that next year. So you can see my little comment there. I'm still a little So you can see my little comment there, I'm still a little admittedly bitter about the cutback in two thousand sixteen. I understand why, I know we need teachers, I've seen the ELL program, as I mentioned up front, that's grown, I know why it's grown, I know there's the need. It's even mandated by state and federal government, so we don't really have a choice. But I will tell you that I think we're keeping the schools clean. I'd probably give, if I was to give it a letter grade, because we all do with education, I'd give it a C+. I think we could do better, but I think what we are lacking is the work, the non-cleaning stuff that custodians do. They do a lot more than just cleaning, so it's, it's the deep cleaning that's not really happening, it's, it's the getting down on your hands and knees and cleaning off the cove base and the hallways and the classrooms, it's not happening. And over time, that's just going to build up and build up, and the schools are going to look worn. And I think that's, that's the effect of losing that. It's also a challenge, I'll tell you, it's a daily challenge, it's very cyclical, it's not every day, but when we have a, heck, when we had the pandemic, we all had to deal with it, you know, we had people calling out sick left and right, it was tough, very tough to fill in for people. I just don't, I don't have the backup I used to. So my flexibility's gone. And we don't want to run the overtime budget through the roof, so if somebody's out at nighttime, I'll assign them three or four hours, not eight hours that I'm lacking, so the schools don't get as clean that way. I'll say the teaching staff, though, I mean, they're good troopers, they understand, they know that there's fewer cleaners, so things aren't going to be as clean as they were. They understand whether somebody's out sick the night before, that they're not going to have their classrooms as clean as they would like. So just, I'm just hopefully planting a seed with you tonight, I think that's something we need to look at. We did cut the ten positions, and I think that was a mistake. We can talk about ideas, and I'm not looking to get all ten back, but there's going to be some happy median. One thing we do use every day is we have what we call float generators, float custodians. They're not assigned to any school, but they talk to one of our supervisors every single day, and we tell them where they have to go clean, because there's always somebody out. We did a study, there's, on average, eight people, Dan, out a night or something like that. We have ninety-two custodians, if you're, if you have six to eight missing every single night, and we only have two to fill in, you can do the math. So I believe it's a problem, I don't have a solution for you tonight, I'm just planting the seed, hopefully. This is a little more graphic of what I'm, so I, like Bob Chopin, I've been here a long time, so I've accumulated all this data. And so the blue lines represent the square footage of our school district. So back in the early two thousands, late nineties, we were pretty stable, then we built a new, brand-new high school and added to the existing high school. And then things stayed pretty stable for the longest time, and then, then we added Franklin Street. The next year, not even on the chart yet, is, we're adding to Penetrau. So what I'm trying to show here is the gap, not, not that the, the perfect state was in year ten or year nine, I'm not trying to tell you that that year was perfect as far as the number of custodians we had, but you can see ever since then, there's, the gap's gotten bigger and bigger. We're dips down around year nineteen or twenty, that was two thousand sixteen. So that's where the gap became bigger. We have, again, Dan and I have talked about this, we've gotten smarter on how we do things, we've gotten better equipment, we've gotten, we've gotten machines that we can ride on. So we've gotten better equipment to do things, we've, those force multipliers that you hear about, we have, we've done those sorts of things. So I think that's how we've been able to survive, you know, at least up to two thousand sixteen, but, you know, I can tell you, we're scuffling at this point. So last but not least, deferred maintenance systems. One of my bugaboo's of deferred maintenance is I feel like I pound my head against the wall every year, I go in and ask for X number of dollars, and I get a hundred thousand dollars. I ask for six hundred, I get a hundred thousand, ask for a million, I get a hundred thousand. Some years, I get zero. I'll talk about that a little bit more. So what's cooking? What do we actually get money for? I will, I will say this, I think the city's been good to us. I mean, they, they have been as far as providing money for renovations, for, you know, for those big projects. Part of the reason they have to do that is they didn't give us the deferred maintenance money to start with, because you don't, you don't maintain things along the way, it reaches a point where you have to bond everything. And so where's, what's the proper approach? I don't know. So as, as I mentioned, we're wrapping up some work at Fairgrounds Middle School, the joint special approved this work a couple of months ago, just, we had a lot of money left over in contingency, and we're just taking about three hundred thousand of that to do some additional, put some additional tiles on walls, because that's going to help the walls last longer. You've seen all those nice white stones that are on the outside of the school, we're putting in some barriers to help hold that in place, so it doesn't wash out on the pavement. One of the science teachers asked for some new science tables that got missed the first time around, so we're providing those. They also asked for some, they already had some fixed extension cords, but they just came down and they hung there, so if you wanted to, you could take it and swing it at somebody and knock them out. We're replacing those with retractable ones, so they go up higher, so it's a safety issue. So those are the sorts of things we're doing, we're wrapping up Fairgrounds. Penetrau, I encourage you to just drive around the school, you'll see what we're, what's going on there. We're going to be taking ownership of the south classroom wing, so that's the one that's closest to the Henry Burke Highway, just in a couple of weeks. And that'll be open for the student population right after the April vacation break. One of the first things that'll be happening is during that break is taking the two classrooms that are in the portable classroom and putting those teachers and the students in the south classroom wing. The north classroom wing will be done later this summer, but definitely in time for the new school year. A lot of the site work will be completed this summer, the intersection, you've probably noticed, is interesting with lights dangling and many more lights than you would think are necessary, but that's all going to be cleaned up this summer and ready for the new school year. The only thing that won't be done is the media center, and that is going to be going in the location where the portable classroom is now. That's, will be completed, scheduled for completion in December of this year. New middle school, work, site work has already begun, they've already started removing trees. Dan can hear the buzzing every morning when he gets up, actually, it doesn't, it doesn't start till seven AM, so. Is it what time, you get up at seven AM probably? Yeah, okay. All right. So we had some complaints, actually, some people in the neighborhood on Cherrywood work from home, and we've just told them, please be patient, this is, this phase is only going to last for another week or so, because we're not, we're cutting down the trees, they're actually chipping them in place, and then we have some big machinery that's pulling the roots out, and that's going, that's being processed on-site as well and then replaced. And then the foundations, they're going to be digging the trenches to do the foundation, concrete foundations in the middle of April. So that, that project's really starting to take off, it's kind of exciting. We were concerned for a while with permitting, we've gone from Medallion Court, which is on the southern side of the site, started there because we could not go, and the, the main road end's going to come off Buck Meadow, and we're still awaiting a permit to go across some wetlands there. So we're working with the state, our engineers are working with the state to get that. Hopefully, that'll be resolved during the month of April. We didn't feel we could wait till then to start the project, which is why we went the direction we did. Had we waited, we didn't, we weren't sure about completing in time for August twenty twenty-four. Franklin Street, we've talked about that a little bit, Esser-funded replacement of HVAC system has already started, we're going to be doing a lot of work during April vacation break, and then a lot more during the summer. Brand-new HVAC system, brand-new lighting system, all-new suspended ceilings, new electrical service, all-new windows, more energy-efficient windows. So as you noted, it's, I don't know, did you everybody eat supper? So I went with the cooking theme here, so what's cooking, that's what's going on right now, but simmering, so that's stuff that's upcoming. Franklin Street, we just approved five million dollar bond for the alderman, and we're getting construction drawings this week from the architect, and we're going to, the main thing happening in the summer are those two emergency egress stairwells near the, end of the, of the building. We just, I typed this, and then like an hour later, once I sent, hit the send button, I received some preliminary traffic study stuff. So we're actually having a meeting set up on Monday morning, which I sent you a note, Dan, with, we're going to have the traffic, the city engineer, the traffic engineer, the consultants, the Franklin Street principal, Alexis, the preschool director, so we're all going to meet, and they provided five different options for us to choose from. So you'll be seeing something from that, hopefully in the next month. Next summer, with that bonded money is, we're going to, we can't do all this work while the HVAC work is taking place, because most of the HVAC workplaces in the ceiling, they're also taking down all the old pipes and the asbestos and everything, so we could not, at the same time, be changing out the flooring and that sort of thing. So flooring, roofing, making some wall adjustments that the principals requested are all next summer, so summer twenty twenty-three. Other project that's getting close is the south high school track. I think you may have heard in the past that the track does not meet NHIAA standards at this point, it will not allow us to hold meets on that track. And so we have the documents ready to put out for bid, I have to do the front-end piece for the bidding, and they'll hopefully go out on this street for bidding in, sometime next week, early next week. Probably, we're expecting that this summer, we would be doing the HVAC improvements at Charlotte Lids and Fairgrounds, where we'll be adding cooling to the rear wing and also the, I call it the center wing, but that's the wing that has the media center and the art and chorus rooms, I believe. But by the time we got the drawings, we still had some hoops to jump through with Esser funding, and then highly aware of the supply chain issues, particularly in getting air handlers at this late date, we decided to hold off, bid that out next year. And Dan's switching that Esser two instead of one funding. So what's on the menu? So what's the far future? This is the, this is my commentary earlier, I ask for six hundred, I get a hundred. This year, I'm asking for one point two eight million, I'll probably get a hundred. Just, that's just. Ask for a hundred, yes. They might make me write a check for a hundred. Well, you get used to it after a while. I'm hopeful, you know, I just, I understand, there's a lot of competing interest for the dollars that we have to spend in this city, and, you know, this is one of them. And I, again, I go back to my early comment, I think the city's been good to us as far as providing money for refurbish our schools, when it's time to renovate or construct, I think we've done okay. I think we just have to keep pushing for that same thing. I'll talk about that in a second, but these are the projects I have for, you've already seen all these, this is part of the capital improvement and deferred maintenance budget that you at least, some of you approved with the last year's school board. So you may be seeing this for the first time if you're new members of the school board, but this is what was approved for, to request anyway. And I went to the capital improvement committee on the same night as you had a board event meeting in February sometime, I think, and presented all this to them. It was the same night I told them we needed five million dollars for bonding for Franklin Street, which, of course, we ultimately got that. Those are all, I won't go through them, I mean, those are all projects that are needed. I would thank for, for a long term, because Dan and Sean are not going to be sitting in these seats forever and ever, but that very last item, the, you know, that's facility master plan, I think is something that we should have as a, as a school district. Really, really look at all our schools, really look at the condition of the schools, what are we using the schools for? What are, what are we forecasting using the schools for? I could pick a school, but then that neighborhood would get upset with me. But is the school really needed, you know, is it, as it's outlive its usefulness? Answer those sorts of questions, and have, have that in a plan, the city has a master plan, and I actually printed it out, it's about that thick, it doesn't really talk about schools. So I think it's something that we, as a school district, should have. Dan and I said, well, I think we're going to retire, we'll come back as consultants and do it for them, yes. It will charge three hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is a real number, that's, I asked one of our architects, how much would it cost for you to come in and do that, and that's the number he gave me. That's, and I did go look across the country at other cities' school master plans, and I believe it's probably a good number to, to plan with.
Sandra, microphone, sorry.
Some of you will remember Brian McCarthy, who we lost several years ago, unfortunately, but he was the master planning, from my perspective, for the school district, and I'm always, when I look at it, I'm always grateful because he, I think he did a, he, I think he did a, I always like to mention it because, because I think we need to remember the people who were, I think he was critical, I think he, we wouldn't be in as good a condition as we are. Admittedly, we're not perfect, but we would be much worse had he not been so diligent, so, but anyway, enough, thank you.
I would agree with that. So I'll try to wrap this up. Aside from already presenting to you the one point two eight, there's still another ten million dollars of projects, and as time goes on, we add to that. And at, at a hundred thousand dollars a year, you can do the math, we'll just never catch So speaking of capital projects, Main D and Burchill are next up, following the middle school project, or perhaps sooner. Mr. Donovan and I have had some discussions about use of Esser funds, at least to get a jump on these, particularly the HVAC portions of them. So those, those are approaching thirty years, thirty years is kind of a golden number for school renovations, constructions, by the time it gets to be thirty years, it's time. So those are, they're hitting that number. Mount Pleasant is past that time. Some of these schools, as school board members, I'm sure, you go into the schools every now and then, you walk through them, and, and you can see for yourself just the wear and tear, the oldness of them, so to speak. We did pay some attention to Mount Pleasant a couple of different times over the last decade, when they got new air conditioning in most of the classrooms, so it's not like we've not done work, but for major renovation, it was nineteen eighty-seven. New Surles was nineteen ninety-five, that was primarily as a result of the neighboring landfill, and we had to, before my time, they had to evacuate the school, move to St. Louis, and they spent a year or so redoing New Surles. Lived in Nashua that time, it was probably major news.
I worked at New Surles during that time, and my children were both at the school, so, yeah. But the resulting additions and everything afterward were wonderful, so.
So do you look at Mount Pleasant? I personally think that's one of the most neglected schools we have. I remember the parents, when that air conditioning issue came up, I remember parents crying practically telling us what the, how great the needs were, but when you think about the schools, at this point, it seems to me, going to your point about the master plan, I think we need to determine, you know, if we are, if our numbers are decreasing, then... our numbers are decreasing, then can we close the school? And if we can, now would be, seem like it would be a good time to start making a plan for that.
So I don't think I even, Mr. Donovan and I talk all the time. So at the capital improvement committee, one of the questions they asked me, and I, again, we've both been so busy, we haven't had a chance to talk. They asked me, your, your, your enrollments are down around 10 million. You know, 10,000, sorry. In Philadelphia.
Glad you were wrong.
10,000, 10,000, I'm sorry. I like millions, see, I got 10 million up there. 10,000. Well, back around the year 2000, it was close to 13,000. So you, and now you've, you've added Franklin Street School. And so you've gone down nearly 3,000 students, but you're adding space, and why is that? So I, I think I've been around long enough, I kind of sort of know. I, I know the special education programs have grown significantly in that time. I don't believe back in 2000, we had preschool in our schools. I don't think we had kindergarten in our schools. So those, those are the three things I came up with. I said, you're going to have to talk to school administration, you'll have to talk to superintendent, talk to the board of ed. But we, we have made use of the space. It's not like there's, I don't believe there's empty space in our schools.
And ultimately, I believe we will save, Franklin Street will save us money ultimately. I mean, obviously, we're now putting a large investment, but we were paying. I'm a Realtor, I think we were overpaying for what we had in Merrimack. I, I think it was for the, I mean, it was obsolete in every sense of the word from, as a Realtor, in my opinion. And I admit, I'm not the adult. But I think that, I think that's part of the equation, too. It's a, it's, it really is a, I can understand why they would want, that seems like a significant amount of money to do a, a master plan. But I also, to do it, to do it thoroughly, I'm sure it's time, time, time-intensive.
Well, I was asked, you know, if, okay, 5 million for a bond and 6 million of Esser money, are, are you going to come back in a couple of, I think Ms. Johnson maybe asked this question. You're going to come back in a, in a couple of years and ask for some more money for Franklin Street? I said, no. I mean, it, once we do all this that we've got planned, that school is going to be set for a long, long time. You know, something may happen, I don't know, tree, you know, something may fall out of the sky, but that, that school is, and I mean, it really has really good bones. What attracted us to the school to start with was very well-built. And we knew that eventually the HVAC system would have to get replaced. We knew we'd want to replace the lighting with good, modern LED lighting, so those sorts of things. So then the pandemic happened and Esser funding happened, kind of pennies from heaven in a strange sort of way. So we're getting done much quicker than we anticipated. But, yeah, so you, you can make a case for all these schools. It's not necessarily in this order. Kind of, it's kind of Sean's order, but we could talk about, certainly we will, we will talk about it. But Main D and Birch Hill do not, they're open concept, so security is an issue there. That's kind of why I have them up there. I probably get more complaints HVAC-wise from Main Dunstable than any other school that we have currently.
And I, I would agree with that. They actually, it's really hard to pick a winner because, because when you do that, you, you say, well, how long do you make somebody wait? But I think the issue of whether we want to close the school at some point, I think before we start continuing on at this point, you know what I'm saying? You wouldn't want to improve it and then close it. That would, that wouldn't make any sense, so. But I appreciate your, it's been very interesting. Thank you.
But I'd say at the same time, with Esser funding is available. You want to jump while iron's hot. And once those are gone, they're gone. So I, I would say Birch Hill, Main D, I, I doubt that those are two schools that we would close. For, I mean, for one thing, they're out, they're not in the center of town, they're, they serve those neighborhoods.
And that open concept, in my view, it, it, it does a disadvantage, I believe, to the, to the learning. That's always been my opinion. I think that was a, a trend, and I think we've outlived it. I think it has proven not to be the best maximum use of it. But I would agree with you, yes. Thank you.
So just some other things I've thrown in here. So the next, I want to say, three years in our plan, we have to replace the turf in Stelo Stadium. Seems like we just did, but it's been, it's been 12 years. If you drive around this school and just observe the pavement, I believe we need to pour some money into restoring this. If we wait, it's the same thing as you do some preventive work. It's better to put some money in it now than just wait till it totally falls apart and you have to spend a lot of money on it. And then there, we still have some access control and security improvements that we like to do. Believe it or not, that system, it's, it's almost 10 years old now. So some, some of the key components are, it's end-of-life sort of stuff. So we're, those are three other major projects. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Gilio?
I just have a quick question regarding the north high school pavement restoration. Do we own, like, driving here, once I got off Broad Street, there are lots of, lots of areas where the road is really bad. Is that the school district's responsibility or the city's?
We own, starting with Sharon Avenue, that little side street that goes off in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Our property starts, our road starts there.
Okay, okay. I'll pay attention next time I'm coming back.
I was looking at today, tonight when I came here, there's a lot of potholes.
There are, yeah.
It's very hard to drink my coffee in the morning.
Sharon Avenue, Sharon Street, whatever that neighborhood is.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. On the deferred maintenance, which projects went to the capital improvement committee? Was it the ones, starting, that whole thing, starting with $160,000?
Where was that? Right there.
That went to capital improvement?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Did the deferred maintenance on the school's Main Dunstable, did that go to deferred maintenance or is that just with us?
They were, so the, the city treasurer tracks all this stuff. So when he, he's trying to figure out future, you can probably talk about this better than I can. He wants to know what's coming in the future. So I've, they know that Main Dunstable, Birch Hill, and the rest of the schools are coming. They have my spreadsheet that lists them with rough dates of when Sean would like to see them done. If that answers your question. So they have that information, yes.
Okay. And they haven't rated any of these projects yet?
No, because they, they really only rate the coming year's projects.
Okay.
They don't go much beyond next year.
Okay. Also, you said, I remember when the pandemic hit and we never laid anybody off in the district. We kept everybody, I mean, other places laid people off, we kept everybody employed because we felt it wasn't their fault. And I kept asking you, what are they doing with the schools? Because nobody's been in the schools, we must be running out of projects. So did they do that little nitty-gritty cleaning that you're talking about? Really go in there and do, do that deep cleaning when we were closed down?
That was, yes, that was in one of the silver linings of the pandemic, is the schools were probably cleaner than everywhere at the end of that time. Yes.
Okay. And in 2016, 10 positions were cut, were eliminated, and you want some of them back. I can't, I'll tell you something right now. I'm looking at a couple of other positions, because if I put two in, I have to take three out. If I put three in, I have to take five out. Because I think right now, I think for the board, we need to have that part-time administrative secretary to do these minutes, because this is a nightmare without having these for beta minutes. And these summaries, there is no summary. There's no such thing as summary because we don't get anything. So if you have to go back and look at anything, that's very important. Also, let's see, what else? I'm looking at, I'd like a grant writer, but I'd like the grant writer to be paid with the grants, because I think there's more grants out there. We're sharing with the mayor. I don't like to share anything with the mayor when he came in here and peated a process here that he should never have done. So I don't trust him. Didn't trust him before, don't trust him now. Also, some of the, you said that there was money left over. Where's my notes here? Contingency money left over. And that was from which project that you used to buy science tables, retract, retractable extension cords for safety issue? Which bond money for which school was that?
Those Fairgrounds Middle School.
Okay, Fairgrounds Middle School.
That's part, it's part of the overall middle school project. So it just, rough numbers, you know, don't quote me exactly, but I want to say, when it's all said and done, and we're not done, but we're very close to being done, at Fairgrounds Middle School, there's about $1.6 million left over. So then we identified, it was kind of the plan all along. Let's get all the stuff done that we really, really need to get done first. And then when we get to the end of the project, we'll identify those borderline things that should be done, but we're going to hold off on. So that's the 300,000 that we did, that we've committed to doing. So that number will go down to about 1.3.
Okay.
Can't look at that in a vacuum, because as, we're, we're still in the middle of Penachuk Middle School. And that contingency is getting very, very low.
Okay, in the bond, Mr. Donovan, we can bond desks, science tables. You can bond that?
Yeah, I mean, typically if something lasts 15 years or 20 years, you can, which the type of desks would last that long and tables.
Because I remember one time, there was always a question about if desks and tables could be bonded.
If, if I could, every construction project, and most of them of any size, has a line called FFNE, which is furniture, finish, furniture, fixtures and equipment. And that is specifically for this, and it's bonded, it always has been. Back in the high school project, this, this school was bonded.
Yeah, I remember we were asked about that, if it could be bonded or not. That's why I keep asking, because that's thrown into the, was it a 30-year bond, 20-year bond?
Typically, they're 20.
20-year bonds, so 20 years.
It's almost paid off now.
It's before it's paid off. And it's, and every time the mayor bonds, our taxes go up. And also, when you were talking about the facility master plan, Mr. Donovan, have we looked at the enrollment at each school to see where the numbers are really dropping? I would, because I remember, I think years ago, they were talking about maybe Mount Pleasant. I know there's, I remember when the facade was falling down on the building and some other things. Whether or not we can combine, I think it was maybe that school, another school, with Amherst Street School. So are the numbers steady there? Are they dropping there?
We'll, we'll have that information for you next week. We've done some work already, I'm reviewing that now. So I haven't, I've been dealing with the total, because remember, we had one presentation say 10-5. My presentation said 10-1, so we're trying to come up with what that delta was. And then there will be information in what you receive next week by school.
Yeah, because I asked last at our meeting, what we reported in October and what's the numbers at this point in time, too, because things fluctuate. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Seem?
I would just like to thank Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith. If I don't show you the respect you are due, I apologize, because I recognize how valuable both of you are, what a difference you've made to our, to our community, to our schools, to our students. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Now I'm hungry. Me, too. Talk all about that later. Okay, so without any other, I'll just check in with Mr. Donovan. Just waiting to see if you have anything more to add. All done?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So without any more presentations tonight, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Johnson and Ms. Gilio. And we have Ms. Darling on the phone, so we have to do roll call. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Claff, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop Fords? Yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are, we are adjourned at 7:47.